For sure, I mean they can come to the all those other things. So that way you're more comfortable. Um, you know, we got your
This sounds to me Before we get these, just the boardroom's sitting here in June and July. It's me. Okay.
All right. It is seven oh one P M. Uh, Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand twenty four. We'll call the city council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zander, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Most gracious God, I ask you to be with us as a city council meeting, business meeting. We pray for all the members here and we just wanted to get get the meeting smooth as possible. So just keep us going and, you know, just just be with us and guide us and protect us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Um, we will start off, we have a presentation from Ms. Frederick. Do you guys, uh, any time to connect?
We got it.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we good? Okay, all right. Hi, everyone. Um, hello. Uh, my name is Sarah Frederick and I am the assistant director of the Recreation Authority of Roseville and East Point. Um, I like to visit, um, each of the cities of both East Point and Roseville bi-monthly to kind of give you guys a rundown of what's coming up and everything and what, um, we have done in the past and everything in hopes to get, um, more information about our programs to the community and hopes that, um, everyone comes to our events and programs. So, um, we're kind of wrapping up our summer and everything, so I'm just going to kind of give a brief overview of what is, um, upcoming in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then, um, I'll be back in September to kind of introduce, um, many of our new programs and everything that we'll be bringing this fall. So, um, for community events wise, um, we just got three left for the summer. We have our Pride in the Park a movie, which is this Thursday at Veterans Memorial Park in Roseville. We have a new, um, event called Donuts with Grown Ups, um, that's going to be this Saturday at Spindler Park. And then, uh, Rockin' Summer Night, which is August fourteenth at Kennedy Park. Um, I'm going to get into like a little detail with each of those three events. Um, so again, this is going to be our second annual Pride in the Park, um, at Veterans Memorial Park. It's going to be this Thursday from six P M. to ten P M. Uh, new this year, we added a movie at the end, so at eight o'clock, um, on the soccer field, we'll be showing Wonka. Um, last year we had Magenta Moody and, um, we added a magician here. So, um, right at six forty-five, right when the event kind of starts, we're going to do a little, um, flag ceremony, um, just kind of welcome everyone there and then, um, we'll get right into the event and everything. We have a lot of, uh, community organizations coming, um, vendors. We have a lot of activities, um, we got sidewalk chalk, um, we got buttons that we, uh, made for the families, uh, got yard games, we got big photo opportunities, um, we're doing bracelet making, uh, Noodles and Company is bringing noodle art, and then we also have a face painter. So just a lot of nice fun activities for the families and again, um, wrapping the event up at eight P M. for the Wonka movie. Again, this is our new event, uh, Donuts with Grown Ups, just a cute little way for the families to come out to the park, um, to spend some time with a special grown up, um, of their choice. Um, we're going to provide donuts and, um, activities for donut themed crafts. And then we'll be doing that at the West Pavilion, so that's right next to the playground, so plenty of time to play there and everything. And the weather looks really great this weekend, so, um, we hope to see a lot of families out for it. And then last but not least, this is our, um, flagship event of the summer. Uh, this is Rockin' Summer Night. Um, it's going to be on Wednesday, August fourteenth at Kennedy Park. It's from five to nine P M. Um, we have tons of kids attractions, um, lined up. We're doing a magician, um, we have a video game truck, we have a foam party thing for the kids. Um, we're doing cornhole this year for the adults, um, plenty of other activities and things going on with food trucks. And, um, we have the Beer and Wine Tent, again, hosted by the, um, East Point Lions Club. And then at seven P M., uh, the Jerry Ross Band will start. So that's a really big event. Um, in the next few weeks, we'll be posting a lot more of our activities that we're going to be having there, breakdown of what's going to be at the event, but this is kind of the gist and overall of it. And then, um, to wrap up the summer too, actually, this isn't really an event, but it's kind of a family getaway. Um, each summer we, uh, book a big trip to Kalahari for, uh, families to go on a trip, um, with their family right before school starts and everything. And it's a really nice time to go to Kalahari because a lot of kids in Ohio are already back to school, so the, um, resort isn't as crowded. Um, and the nice thing about Kalahari is it has indoor and outdoor water park. And we go for two nights and, um, for the family, um, it's all included as the two nights and a charter bus transportation to and from the Recreation Authority Center. So we have a few rooms left for that, so, um, we ask that those who are interested, hop on it really quick to secure your room. And then I just wanted to give a little, um, update of kind of what all new programs we're actually bringing this fall. Um, we're always trying to bring new programs and everything. We listen to the feedback of the residents and what they want to have here at the rec center and what programs. So, um, we always like to do, it's kind of a new, uh, thing we've done last few years and seen good feedback. We like to do a, an adult kind of program for twenty-one plus and everything. So we're doing a rare backyard bash. It's kind of be like a tailgate type of event. We're going to be doing cornhole, we have food trucks, yard games, um, and we will, um, be giving away, uh, drink tickets and everything for that. So that's all included in that fee. Uh, Great Family Bake Off, um, we're really excited for this one. It's a cute little family event and we're going to be purchasing Easy Bake Ovens. So I don't know if anyone ever made food on an Easy Bake Oven before, but it's going to be a challenge with the Easy Bake Oven. So that will be cute. New preschool classes, um, Story Craft Explorers, um, and then one I'm very excited for, um, as we continue to, um, I guess promote or not promote, um, expand our adaptive and special needs programming. Um, one feedback I had, um, from a local group is that they wanted a basketball league. Um, many communities in the area, um, have a adult special needs basketball league and they play each other. Um, I know Sterling Heights is a part of it, Warren is a part of it, Shelby Township, and, um, we're going to try to introduce a team this year. So that's what the Northeast Adaptive Recreation Basketball League is with. We're also introducing, um, Polynesian Dance for Special Needs, um, Dinner and Game Club for Special Needs, Special Creations Craft Club, and then an Inclusive Kitchen Creations. Um, those programs are all going to be run by me, um, and so if anyone has any questions about that and, um, any of our special needs or adaptive programming ideas or anything, I'll be your person you can talk to. And then we are adding some more enrichment programs for our youth and teens. We're doing Code and Conquer, Be Your Own Boss. And then, um, our volleyball program for our teens was, uh, very successful these past two years. So, um, one of our coaches has, um, gladly offered to help, um, with our new program that we're introducing, which is our introduction to volleyball. So that's for our third and fifth graders, so that they can kind of learn the fundamentals and skills before they get thrown into a league. Um, so we're very excited for that. And then, um, for our adults as well, um, we are offering crochet for beginners, um, and we're bringing back our culinary classes. Um, so we'll have a class on how to make ravioli, pierogi, and strudels. So that will be very fun. And then, um, Kango, Kango Jumps Rebound Class, um, another, uh, drop in exercise class, and then Belly Dance Fitness. And then I just want to take a brief moment to thank all the sponsors that we've had this year thus far. So this has been a big increase in sponsorship for us and it has been able to, um, alleviate many of our costs for our special events and be able to provide many great things at the events for the families and kids. So we are very grateful for all the support we've had this year so far. And we're just going to continue to grow this list and create partnerships with many local businesses and organizations within the community. And then, um, our fall newsletter will be available, it's going to be August fifth is when it's coming out. We determine that date and everything. So that will be available digitally. Um, we also will print, that we have some printed out that will be, um, here at City Hall, um, if you'd like to pick one, pick one up at the rec center. And then, once the kids are back in school, we'll be sending, um, a newsletter home to all the kids as well. Any questions?
Just, just, just one question. Tell us about what you just told me. What's going, what's going on over right now during the day?
What's going on?
Yeah.
Summer Day Camp.
Yeah. Tell us about that.
Wild. So right now, we, um, have sixty kids each day at summer camp and, um, they come here Monday through Friday. We operate from eight in the morning until five thirty P M.
Ooh.
Uh, today they went to the pool, um, they have lots of, they go on three field trips a week and everything. And it is, it's my favorite time because the kids are so fun and it's nice to hear all the laughter and giggles inside the building and the screams. I love it all. So, um, it's a great time. So if you guys ever stop by, it's, it's very lively at the rec center right now with the kids.
All right, any questions?
Accept it. Thank you and
Thank you.
God bless all through everything you do and folks.
All right, uh, with that, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Shadler.
Right, moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second there.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
And we'll move on to the first hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Hello, mayor and council. I'm Jerry Hitchcock. I've been a resident for fifty-nine years. You guys have to stop dealing with this Nine Mile. Leave it alone. You're wasting money getting these proposals. You're wasting money on all this stuff, reducing Nine Mile. Leave it alone. Just beautify what we have. We need police officers. You want to draw businesses. We need more police officers to draw more business. The crime's getting out of hand. We have issues with getting our other streets fixed. Forget about Nine Mile. Get it fixed, be done with it. We got other streets that need to be fixed. You guys worked on my street, but stopped short of my section of the neighborhood on Nevada. And then you need more checks and balances with the streets because what they did two years ago looks like crap now. That they're, it's really bad. You're not, you're, you're getting the lowest bid and the quality shows that as the lowest bid. But we need more police officers for sure for the city. There's one something else, I can't remember now. But, uh, it's just, you're wasting everybody's time with this Nine Mile, reducing it, putting roundabouts. Roundabouts is ridiculous in the areas you're planning to do. I do a lot of business at Droni Hardware. You start messing with us, Droni Hardware, now I can't do my business. Not only are you messing with his business, but you're messing with my business because I can't get in there to do business with them. I can't think of what else I was supposed to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, um, I'm Caitlin Donnelly, East Point resident, um, coming again to let everyone know that the East Point Community Garden on the Nine Mile and Grashit area, kind of kitty corner from the, um, fire department. Our U-Pick beds are fully planted. We have a lot of flowers on those bean plants, which means that towards the end of this week is going to be a really good time for green beans. Our U-Pick beds are open for anyone from the community to pick from at any time. We also have our free produce stand every Saturday from noon until two P M. Um, and that is also in front of the garden. And so far this year, we already donated three hundred pounds and our goal is two thousand. So come on out, pick some green beans. We also have some tomatoes ripening too, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Hope everyone is enjoying the weather. Um, a couple of things I wanted to say that, um, it's not even a conversation about the city per se, but other matters in the city. Want to remind people about the importance of voting this year. I don't know if I could stress that more if I stood on the top of the building and shouted it. We're in danger regardless of what side you're, the aisle you're on. We're in danger of people losing their rights as human beings, as citizens of this country. So I encourage people to get out and vote. Research Project twenty twenty-five, Agenda forty-seven, and know who it is you're voting for and what they stand for. Next week, anyone who's interested in filing as a candidate for East Point School District needs to get their petitions in or pay their fee by the twentieth, which is next week. This is important as well. We have a declining district. We have incumbents that have been there for quite a while and it's time to make a change for the better because every student in this city deserves access to a quality education. And if we can't do that for them, what does that say about us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name, my name is Lacey Eber. I've been a resident since nineteen seventy-one. Grew up in East Point. Have owned our house since nineteen ninety-two. We have had many, many mayors in between. We have had many changes. I would like to address, I know I'm late to the game concerning the roads and the road construction. My number one thing I would like to say, a city is like a house and our house is dirty and dilapidated. We have the worst T P W I have ever seen in my life. I'm sorry, Ms. Walton, I should have, I have a meeting with you tomorrow and I should have presented this to you first. This is a chronological order dating to June fourteen of my dealings with the T P W. Do we have nothing resolved? And I feel that tearing up the roads, talking about roundabouts is a mute point until we learn to clean up this city. Do you know that it was the second week of June that they only finally did the trees and put mulch around them? Do you realize that other cities do that in April? Why are we so behind? We had a tree fall on our fence. Then we had another tree fall during a storm. My husband and I raked all branches. This is after having the D P W come out three times to trim this tree that I've been trying to get rid of since June fourteen. The D P W came out, no rakes, no shovels, nothing to clean up the limbs. We had a thirteen foot branch laying on our electrical line. We had a twenty-two inch branch lodged in between our tree embedded and bailed into our, our front lawn. My husband's a stroke victim. I obviously cannot climb trees and use chainsaws any longer. The city is not, I asked the D P W, where are your rakes? Where are this?
You have about thirty seconds?
The city doesn't care. And I think it's time that the city cleans up the facility of the businesses, cleans up the city, the streets, and gets a new D P W director. And if I may, passes along and you just pass it to each person would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And Ms. Walton, I will see you tomorrow with the pictures that go with that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I shouldn't have to read this onto the record, but I am. And it's under the preamble for the city, section two dash ninety-nine policy. It is the public policy of the city that all officers and employees shall be guided by the following principles. Public interest. The power and resources of government services shall be used only to advance the public interest. Objective judgment. Loyalty to the public interest requires that all matters shall be decided with independent, objective judgment, free from avoidable conflicts of interest, improper influences, and competing loyalties. Accountability. Government affairs shall be conducted in an open, efficient, fair, and honorable manner, which enables citizens to make informed judgments and hold officers and employees accountable. Democratic leadership. All officers and employees shall honor and respect the spirit and principles of representative democracy and uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State and carry out and comply with the laws of the nation, state, and the city. Respectfulness. All officers and employees shall safeguard public confidence by being honest, fair, impartial, and respectful toward all persons and property with whom they have contact in official capacity and by avoiding conduct which may tend to undermine respect for city officers and for the city as an institution. What a shame I have to read this onto the record. This is something that should be followed to a T. And I'm not going to name names, but there are those who have completely violated this and it is shameful and it is disgusting. The roads, like others have said, give it up. You got far bigger problems going on in this city. You've got slum lords who don't give a damn about their nuisance tenants disrupting the neighborhood. They've lost their damn minds. They act like they own the block. No, they don't. They have no respect for other people's privacy, for their property. They just think they can do whatever the hell they want to do and nobody's going to do anything about it or hold them accountable. I got nuisance tenants who put up a pool without a permit. That damn thing was ready to collapse at any given time. Then, when they were told to take down the pool, they left a foot to two feet of water sitting for over two weeks. And when they drained it, it stunk to high heaven.
You have fifteen seconds.
My neighbor on the other side could even smell how disgusting it was. They flooded the backyard. No tickets were issued? Are you kidding? And then luckily, I found this out for myself. I just mowed both my front and backyard the weekend of July sixth and it shows that I didn't mow my grass. Are you kidding? It's
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I was at the special meeting on June twenty-eighth and I know there was some confusion. Um, you had had that meeting just to discuss the costs of the road project for Nine Mile Road. Um, myself, I came out and spoke because I feel that when you're managing that large amount of money, it might be helpful to get some input from residents on how to spend that money or possibly you could allocate it to, uh, parts of the project that are most important to people or that you have most support for. So that's why I came out. I assume that's why other people came out and spoke too. Um, you had discussed that there was going to be a traffic study done, um, after the construction was done for, um, phase three. Originally, I think it was tossed around maybe sometime in July, end of July. Um, you know, my thinking is, is that you have two high schools on Nine Mile Road. You have East Point High School at Nine and Grashit. You have Southlake High School at Nine and Harper that a lot of East Point students go to. Nine Mile has traveled a lot during the school year, so it would seem to make more sense to hold off on any traffic study until after Labor Day when kids are back in school, staff and faculty are back in school. Um, you know, that's going to make a difference as far as not only work traffic, but school traffic too, whatever the school hours are. I, I assume it might be a little different than normal rush hour traffic. Um, I did email Ms. Walton. She had said that you all were going to wait till after Labor Day to do the traffic study. But then I was looking at the bills that you're paying, um, from July second to July sixteenth. And you have a check that's being written out to A E W. for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And in the notation, among other things, it, uh, references Nine Mile Capacity Analysis Study. So I don't know, and I know that you're not able to answer questions that I'm asking you, but does that mean that a study's already been done and we're paying for it? Or do we pay for the study two months before it's going to be done if we're waiting till after Labor Day? If a study was done, are there results that, you know, residents can look at to, to kind of just verify how much traffic is on Nine Mile Road? Um, have there been capacity studies done for phase two and phase one? Um, you know, is, is there somewhere that we can get that information? So that's basically, you know, my concern about the traffic study because that will impact what you're doing with phase three of Nine Mile. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Hi, Dal Toma. I live in Pot Point, Michigan, um, United States of Israel. Um, the reason I wanted to come here was just to discuss, um, you know, um, I have a question for the city manager. If, if the council people and the mayor don't answer emails, is there somebody above them? I mean, can they just go rogue and do whatever they want? Because they're supposed to be constituents or they're supposed to answer to the constituents and they're supposed to be serving the public. Um, you know, I don't know if You know, I don't know if you guys get paid or not. I have no clue. But, I mean, there should be a supervisor of the supervisor and make sure that they're doing their job because, you know, I know they don't answer my emails, but other people have emailed them and they don't, apparently, I thought it was just me. Apparently, other people have emailed them and they don't answer their emails either. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, aren't you supposed to be serving the public? I mean, if you don't, if you don't even answer an email, then what do you do? I'm like, I mean, I don't get it. Second thing is, like, you know, you guys had plenty of time to, or you guys were fast to raise your hand to, you know, when you were talking about the pride thing and the gay thing, you know, you guys were like, yeah, we're all for it. That's right away. But when someone talks about like the genocide in Palestine, not a word out of any of you, not one word. Like, is it so hard to even discuss it, to like, to get a roll call, discuss it? I mean, conversation, but nothing, zero. But the gay thing, oh, you got, I mean, gay, yeah, absolutely, right away. I mean, if you, you don't tackle controversial issues, you sure tackle that pretty fast. Wow, man. Third thing is, last time I was here, I was here, there was a lady that was here and she said people were coming in her backyard because something about the grass was too high. But man, you guys jumped on her to help her right away. But I talk about genocide in Palestine. I mean, you know, I mean, not a word. I figured there'd be some kind of discussion, at least talk about, not a word out of you. I guess babies getting blown up. No. Gays, yes. Lady, grass is too high, we got to help her right away. Bam. So you guys seem to like pick, pick on what you want to do and what you, what you don't want to do. I thought public servants are supposed to be serving the public. I mean, I'm supposed to be your business and people that email you.
You have 30 seconds.
People that email you are supposed to be your business. Code Pink Michigan, who I'm a part of, could not be here. So I'm gonna, I'm here in behalf of them. I just wanted to let all of you know, you're all complicit in genocide of Palestine because my mother taught me that, you know, not saying something, follow their deeds, follow what they do, even if they don't say anything, follow how they act and what they do. And your deeds prove that, so you're all complicit in genocide. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed and we'll move on to approval of minutes, item A. Meeting minutes for June 18th, 2000, regular meeting minutes for June 18th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting, June 18th, 2024.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yeah.
Item B, closed session minutes from June 18th, 2024. Anyone?
I'll motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from June 18th, 2024.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
And moving on to special meeting minutes from June 28th, 2024.
And Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the minutes of the special meeting, June 28th, 2024.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
We'll move on to scheduled hearings. Item A, public hearing for the amended DDA Development and TIF Plan. This is a public hearing that is just, if anyone wants to be heard regarding the DDA Development and TIF Plan. So that public hearing is open. Would anyone wish to be heard? There's a, a proposal on the agenda, the DDA Development TIF Plan. Basically, I guess you would say, Ian, I call it kind of like reincorporating the master plan, updating the DDA plan essentially. All right, seeing none, that public hearing is closed. Next, we have a public hearing for the proposed industrial development district at 22011 Grashit Avenue. Again, this is just a hearing for the district at that location. That public hearing is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard regarding that?
Question, is that that winter sausage?
I'll speak. 2024, have we not evolved as a society to take into consideration how poorly the animals on this planet are treated? Where are all these animals when there are billions upon billions upon billions being slaughtered for food? Where are they? They're in the factory farms. They are deprived of fresh air, freshwater, sunshine. They're being pumped full of antibiotics, steroids. They're fattened up for slaughter so that they're sent to slaughter at six months. There's no regard for these animals. These animals are sentient beings deserving of legal rights. As human beings, we're supposed to be stewards, good stewards, to all animals, to protect them from cruelty. And you guys want to keep, you know, some, what? Offshoot of a slaughterhouse in business? No. Let them go. Let them go extinct, along with the dinosaurs. It's about time people start waking up and thinking about the horrific cruelty that is inflicted on these animals. I mean, if you don't believe me, be my guest. Go spend a day on the kill floor at the slaughterhouse. And then come back and tell me how you think it's such a grand idea to keep all these slaughterhouses and their suppliers in business. We don't need that. We need to start being mindful and considerate of these animals. Would you want to be a cow, a pig, a turkey, a chicken? Any of these animals? Where you're being tortured to death, your limbs are being ripped one by one, you're still alive, you're still conscious in the process of being slaughtered? And what about climate change? What about global warming? Nobody wants to make any changes. You know, this, this planet is being destroyed by the selfishness and greed of the human species. There's only a fraction of the human species who give a damn about trying to save this planet. But everybody else wants to do the play now, pay later. Okay, so the majority of us sitting in this room, we're not going to be around in 50 years, but what about the little kids right now that are under the age of 12? What do they have to look forward to when they get to be our age? You think they're not going to be pissed?
Yep, 30 seconds.
You think they're not going to be like, thanks a lot, thanks for ignoring this, thanks for not making any changes? But the good news is, is at least the younger generation, they're more in tune about what's going on with the animals and they are trying to make a difference. As for the rest of us, we need to do better by the animals and stop looking at them as they're just something that you buy, sell, and trade in the open market. That's disgusting. So no, I'm, I'm not in favor of this district in supporting something that's tied to a slaughterhouse. No, thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else, again, this is just the public hearing regarding the development plan. Yeah, thank you.
Now, is this the winter sausage that's been in East Point for over 50 years?
Yes.
Winter sausage has contributed a lot to East Point. I'm sorry, I agree, the woman that was just here. There are things that do need to be changed, but it's not going to happen in, in the short time that is needed. Winters has contributed a lot to the city of East Point and I believe that they should be allowed to continue to contribute to the city of East Point. They have only, when I first grew up in East Point, we had six different meat markets. There's only one or two at this point. Winters was a mainstay. And Winters contributed to the different festivals, the different community events, and I believe that they should still be able to contribute. The way that meats and produce and everything is processed will not be solved here and will not be solved by denying Winters a license. So please, issue them their permit and let the rest of the people work slowly. Look how long it's taken to get EVs even mentioned. So we have to, everything's a slow motion, but denying income to the city, income to an establishment that's been here for years is disrespectful.
Hello, my name is Marge Tardif. I've lived here since 1954. I went to East Point High School. About Winters, I'm confused. I didn't know that that was a slaughterhouse. I thought it was like a warehouse thing that they distributed the meat to various organizations. I mean, I went there one year because they were selling sausages and hams because it was getting to the end of the year and all the surplus was going to get spoiled and thrown away instead of being donated. They said it was against state law to donate this food. I have no reason why we shouldn't renew the license to Winters. Like the other lady said, it's been a mainstay for this city for the longest time.
Please don't give this business a license. This business basically employs illegal aliens in another slaughterhouse where they murder these pigs. They take about 24 of them, and I know this from firsthand experience, that's why I became a vegan. They put them in a gas chamber, they turn the CO2 on, and these pigs scream for their life. They scream for their life and they bang their heads against the wall until they finally just die, die in agony. And their last memory of humans is you humans are terrorists, you're murdering me, you're killing me, you're eating my flesh. If you want to eat food, eating corpses is not food, first of all. There's plenty of vegan options. Go to Kroger, they have a whole vegan section that's cruelty-free. If you claim you love animals and you're eating animals, the hypocrisy blows my mind. It's why I can't sleep at night. The hypocrisy just blows my mind. How can you say you love a dog? So we just start killing dogs now? Why just, why love one and hate another? Murdering pigs for revenue for the city? You can't find another, you need to murder pigs to get revenue for the city? It doesn't make any sense. That's absolute insanity. How can you claim to love animals if you're paying somebody, 80% illegal aliens, by the way, if you're paying somebody to stab them in the throat and throw them in a gas chamber and turn the CO2 on? If you want that, then why don't you go in the CO2 box and see how you like it? It's not enjoyable and it's not fun. So if you love animals, stop eating them. So employing, employing this business, giving them a license, it's just going to employ the illegal aliens from Mexico to come work there because most Americans won't work in a slaughterhouse. It's not normal to go to work and murder innocent animal that doesn't want to die. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, that hearing is closed and we will move on to reports from administration. City managers, city managers report, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'll start with lead lines. We're continuing that program and replacing those pretty aggressively. The two contractors that are in the community are replacing about 40 lines per week. Our economic development slash sustainability fellow, John Cross, has actually planted 85 trees, so we're continuing to green the community. That program is coming back in the fall, so if you're interested in a tree getting placed in your right of way, please get in touch with us. We have that information on the website or you can stop into our office and get listed on, on that list for the fall to have a tree planted. A lot of them actually from this last round are on Nine Mile. So if you've been on the west side of Nine Mile, some incredible trees looking there and excited for, for those to grow over time. We are preparing for our election coming up and our early voting. Our election is August 6th. Early voting starts on July 27th at the East Point Memorial Library. We do have information out, out front on the table. If you're interested in participating in early voting, you can actually cast your ballot now. It has been a constitutional amendment, so you can cast your ballot early, in person, at the library, starting nine days before the actual election day. So July 27th, if you'd like to vote early and avoid the lines on election day, come out to see our incredible election workers to vote. We have a Neighborhood Watch meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow, so come see our chiefs, our police chief and fire chief will both be in attendance presenting the recent happenings in public safety. That is tomorrow at 5:00 PM here in council chambers. And directly after, our DDA has sponsored a concert right outside in our plaza area, so you can join Neighborhood Watch, get some updates, and then stop by for an excellent concert and some desserts from some of the local food trucks in the area. I'd also like to welcome our deputy building official, Raphael LaFlore. He has started this week, so if you're in City Hall and want to stop by and say hello or you see him out within the community, he's been a great addition and we're excited to see him grow with East Point. We've also received notice, and I don't know if, Rich will touch more on it, but from Priority Waste, that some of our recycling in the city has been contaminated. So we have some letters that are going out. We have some recycling information on the website, also out on the table to provide some feedback, just kind of high level. Some things that you may think are recyclable are not, so it's always good to review what is being accepted. I mean, pizza boxes, I always thought that that was something you could recycle, but it's not. So there are several things that we may assume are recyclable, so please review your recycling. That can cannot be used as an additional trash can. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to our office or DPW or Priority Waste and we can certainly help and provide some materials. With that, Mayor, I can certainly answer any questions you or council may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sure, one question from the hearing of the public. Could you touch on the traffic study? I mean, I haven't received any information as far as I know, we didn't start it yet.
No, it has not been. So as we have talked at that special meeting, council's been supportive of that study starting at, well, once the construction is pretty much done. And we have consumers that is on Nine Mile on the east side, close to 94, which impacts that traffic. And so those studies have not been started at this time. I'm not certain of the exact invoice that was processed, but it could be the pre-work prior to those studies happening and preparing the engineers and the individuals that are participating in that, but they will not start until the construction is complete on Nine Mile.
Thank you. I had one thing I wanted to, not really a question, but touch on. So with political signs, I'm already seeing them pop up and I know that we always have an issue with them being put into the right of way and in areas that they're not allowed in the city. I'd like to suggest to administration, the candidates that will appear on the ballot, maybe send a letter from the city. You know, just look at the ballot, look at all the candidates, send a letter that say, I would like us to just start removing those and disposing them. Not keeping them or retaining them for anyone and I think it would be a good idea to give notice or just say, hey, if you put up signs in our right of ways, we are taking them down and we are throwing them out. Because I already see it starting and I know that it will get worse before it's over. So if council agrees, I'd like administration, the building department, or even DPW, when you see one, pick it up, chuck it. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the finance director's report, Mr. Blom.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. As of about an hour ago, the MERS December 31st, 2023 actuary is on the website. The, if you recall, we got the $6 million grant from the state of Michigan and contributed an extra million from the city. I knew we weren't going to quite get to 60, but it only made it to 57% funded. I thought we'd be a little bit higher. The assets did go up 8.1 million, but the liability went up 2 million. So overall, the unfunded liability went down to 6.1 million, but that is only a 57% funding. So we still got a little ways to go, but we're getting there. And that is all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Blom? All right, moving on to the attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, Member, and Council. Touching on Ms. Walton's statement about contact from Priority Waste, I did receive contact through an email last week from the attorney for priority and he did indicate that they are seeing an increase in residents putting contaminated materials in recycling bins and, and at this point, they're, they're not And at this point, they're, they're not going to take any steps or ask for any additional monies from the city. But he just was, is more of a putting us on notice that they are having those, those issues. And so I did pass along that information to Ms. Walton, I do believe that was also included in your weekly report last week. And last week, I registered for, to participate in the Kroger opioid settlement litigation. And so we should be receiving payment from that settlement as well. Once I get more notification, I'll let the Council know about that. And then if I could direct your attention to the holders that handed out prior to the meeting. Both myself, Ms. Walton, and Ms. Holman, and Mr. Myers. I have met to review both the ordinance regarding notices regarding sidewalk repairs, sewer water connections, danger structures, abating nuisances and other acts. And the notice that the cities, or the city provides to residents. There are several ways that the city can provide notice. Number one, personally serving the resident. Number two, also is serving by certified mail. And also posting, city administration is also requesting that notice be provided via email to the property owner or occupant. And what I've done, if you look on the second page, I've included that proposed language in there. That's only if the city is provided with a valid email address. So this is sort of an option for property owners that they wish to receive notification that way. That as long as they provide an email address to city administration, then they can be, they can be notified and provided notice. If you turn that page, I've also included the entire article for regarding weed control and tall grass and refuge storage. The changes there were part of our discussion. And if you flip the page, you'll see the proposed changes in red. I'm not looking for any decisions this evening. I did previously provide these sections to the Council through an email. So I'd like to direct your attention to section eighteen eighty-four. When I looked at this ordinance, I thought that there were certainly issues as far as notifying the public of what is to be expected on in maintaining weeds and tall grass on the properties. So if you look under section eighteen eighty-four, we refer, we refer to a new section called procedures. And that the building department shall establish reasonable and necessary procedures for the enforcement of this article. If you flip the page, there's also an appeal period that's written into the ordinance now. So if a resident disagrees with an action of the city, they have the right to appeal that decision to the city's building official. And of course, if they're unhappy with that decision, then they can appeal to a board of appeals. Now, I included and actually a third level of appeal to the city council. I know that this is something that's done in the property maintenance code. I don't know if the Council wants many steps of appeal, but it's something that's included in there. And if the city council wants that, then I would certainly include that for a first reading on this ordinance. And then if you flip the page, they have some sections in blue. Those sections were prepared by our new building official, Mr. Myers, who's present in the council chambers. And what this would do is, this would be part of the policy that would be posted on the city's website. So residents would know exactly the procedure that would be utilized by the city. And just for members of the public, I'll, I'll read some of these proposals. The language would include code enforcement officers would spend ten hours each focused on grass enforcement weekly. Three enforcement officers each assigned a district of the city will subdivide their district to cycle through their whole area every week during the growing season. And houses with grass slash weeds and overgrowth will receive posted notice at the property via door tag hanger. Directing them to remove the violation within seventy-two hours or through the closest weekend to the date of the violation, which will be logged in BSNA with photos. Also, after the given timeframe, the officers will re-inspect the property and update the enforcement file in BSNA. And finally, clerical staff will pull a report from properties that did not accommodate compliance and send to contractor daily. So that would be contained in a policy that would be listed on the city's website. A copy would be available here if the resident wanted to review it. And then that policy could be subject to amendments as necessary, depending on the resident's needs. So Mr. Myers is again available, if he's available to answer any questions that the Council may have.
Is this going to be on our next agenda? I can't recall if we scheduled it.
It can be, nothing's been officially scheduled. What the Council did was direct myself to meet with members of the city administration to kind of come up with proposed changes and then bring them to the Council. So that's what these are, and subject to any input from the Council. But if Council is content with what's contained in here, I can put that for a first reading. And then there can be a discussion in a future council meeting.
Well, it would make sense to put it on agenda, since we just got this at seven thirty. We obviously didn't read it.
I circulated, I circulated over the weekend.
Put it the, on the agenda for the next, for the first reading.
For first reading? Okay, I'll put, I'll put it in ordinance form for first reading. I know Mr. Myers is still working on the policy. And again, that would be under section eighteen eighty-four where it says procedures, assessments, administrative fees, and appeal. Under subsection A, procedures, that would be essentially what's referencing the policy. It would drive residents to the city website to see what exactly that policy was. And again, the policy's a container, a draft form is contained in the blue section that was prepared by Mr. Myers.
Yeah, I'm fine with having it on the next agenda too. And seeing what the recommendation from administration is. I think we can discuss it once we have it in front of us, but my, I know my first thought is how much of the procedure do you want in the ordinance versus just in the city policy?
Yeah, we didn't know, myself and members of administration, we didn't know how much you wanted to actually codify in the ordinance itself, or how much we wanted to leave in the policy.
Yeah. And I'd like to hear from administration when you guys, if you say this is a little too strict or whatever, when we discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I do have a question. With the recycling being contaminated.
Yes.
I would guess that the, all the homes and apartments we have in our city probably don't have a list, although it was probably provided for at one time or another. So somebody goes out and gets a Domino's pizza and they throw the box into the recyclables. How, and, and when you explain of the, the company that we have, I have a feeling that they're not going to be as kind as we would like to have them be. And I don't know what kind of timeline they're talking about. So how do we notify, what do they got, thirty-two thousand homes? How do we, how we notify folks now? And not say, well, they got one before, well, maybe they did and maybe they didn't. So I'm concerned about the citizens not knowing that throwing a pizza box in the recyclable. And there's others, there are other, there's other items too, aren't there? It's not just that one.
There are, yeah, there are other things that are put in there. Door tags, we've come up with a couple of different ways to notify, for instance, door tags. Email address, if we have a valid email address. Posting, advertising on the, or posting on the city website, making public announcements here during a city council meeting. So there are a lot of different ways that we can let the public know not to do that.
Well, if the Council would agree and agree with my concern, then let's develop something that we can let the folks know. Something on their door, or, I don't know, what do you think?
If I can, so Mr. Albright has provided the list of addresses, which include photos and specific addresses of where the contamination has happened. We've drafted a letter that will be mailed out by next Tuesday to the residents that we have identified that have had contamination. That will also include an informational flyer behind it that details what is recyclable and what is not. So those will be sent out. Recycling information is available on the website, we also provided some information out front, we also have it on our cable channel. Moving forward, if we've, I mean, some of them even have like grass clippings and yard waste in them. And those are things inside of a recycling container that Priority Waste cannot take. Otherwise, it will contaminate the entire load and basically you can't drop that off at the recycling center and they get charged for it and incur additional fees. And so anyone that puts things that are not recyclable in their container will be tagged from Priority. And they will know they have to take those things out in order to have their can picked up on the next recycling day.
Okay. Let me ask us, me, this is me asking a question because maybe I don't know any better. The truck is going down Lexington Avenue. Got it so far? And the truck goes, grabs the recycling thing, is a, throws it into the truck. And there's a Domino's box in there. How, how in the hell would they know that it was my house that had the Domino's? Do they, are they taking pictures? I mean, would they be able to look in the middle of the recycling thing when it's dumped out and know that that, that box came from me?
They do take pictures. Priority Waste has the cameras on the truck and so they're able to identify. So if we get any complaints of missed recycling or missed trash, they're able to go through the feed and show if the recycling, or if the bins were actually missed or if they were not out at a certain time. So we've had several of those, we were able to identify. And then they also have the pictures. So if they have an entire load that is returned, they have the ability to go back through and identify when they're, they're picking those up. They also have the GPS trackers to show where they were at in certain locations. So they do have the high-tech trucks and I think that was a big part of their presentation here at Council and moving forward to be accountable to the residents in East Point.
I don't believe you.
If I could add too, I've talked to some other city attorneys and it's not just a problem that in our city, they're seeing it. All the other cities that Priority is servicing, same types of issues.
Well, let's just figure out how we can identif, let the people know, and the apartments too, don't forget them, what they should be doing. And all due respect, I don't believe that they have the capacity to look at as the garbage is going into the truck, that they have the capacity of identifying, Harvey Curly just threw a empty Domino's box in the truck, I don't believe that. But we needed to notify them.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've seen the pictures and they're, they're quite clear as to what's in there that shouldn't be.
I'm going to ask two of that.
Mayor, that's all I had on my report section. Council's also in seat of our monthly status report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any, are there any other questions for Mr. Albright?
Can I make, make one more recycling, since we talked about it? Well, can we attach, or we've done attachments for like the water bill. Can we do that too then, for people that get it via email? I think we've added additional attachments and then maybe a flyer in the paper bills, if that's possible.
Absolutely, if Council's comfortable doing that, for the additional mailing, we can certainly add those.
I guess, let us know about that, I guess then. And then I see, well, so in the pizza box thing, I know that's always the most common and popular item to talk about. It's on their flyer here, I think there's one difference, because I asked about this when we went to GFL, so this was before we switched to Priority. When Ms. Doom was here, we, some of us took a field trip, right? Harvey, you and I drove together. A field trip out to GFL and they said they do accept pizza boxes as long as, I think you just take out the, you know, the tray that the pizza's actually sitting on. If there's no grease on the box. And they have not accepted materials as soiled pizza boxes here. So I think if the cardboard is not greasy, they'll take it and you take out that. But I guess if everyone references, I think as long as this PDF on our website's up to date, if you go to the DPW page, it is Priority Waste. So it's got to be at least, you know, a year old at most. There's a list of accepted and not accepted materials, so just go to the city website, everybody. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, this is not for you. Kim and City Manager, I apologize for publicly saying that I didn't believe you. I don't believe the company, okay? But I apologize for saying that, I didn't, I didn't believe you. But I don't believe the company.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Item A, introduction and first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash twelve thirty-nine, authorizing issuance of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand water and sewer system junior lien revenue bond series two zero two four. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I would move to introduce and give first reading to ordinance number twenty-four dash one two three nine, authorizing the city of East Point. Nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars water and sewer system junior lien revenue bond series two zero two four.
Second, man.
Before you guys vote, I just caught, somebody made a change to the motion, there is no second reading on bond ordinances, it's a single reading.
Okay.
So you get one and done on this one?
I understand.
So is the, um.
As long as you understand there's no second reading coming.
Should this be on page, well, I don't know, page thirty-four of the PDF? I guess I don't, just a couple pages in. It says ordinance at the top, should this be, I guess it should say, it's a resolution, not an ordinance?
It's, the, it is an ordinance, but by state law, the bonding ones only need one reading. We had this a year and a half ago when we did the last one.
All right, are there any questions on this item?
So I guess we're just, we're introducing and it's, it's final, yeah, approving, final reading or approving. That's not a first reading with expectation of second. So we all agree to that then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Moving on to item B, introduction and first reading of the DDA amended development plan and tax increment. Financing plan in ordinance number twenty-four twelve thirty-seven. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or did anyone have questions first or wanted to hear about it first? Why don't you give a brief overview?
Good evening, Mayor and members of Council. As you know, this has come, this came to you before, so the DDA, it did then go back to the DDA. Because there were some changes that were made and so the DDA went through and reapproved it based on the changes or based on the original document with one addition, and that is a streetscape plan that they had previously approved from AEW. That's basically guiding the, the improvement of the streetscape as we go through and replace the water mains along Rashid Avenue. Other than that, there were some few clerical changes that needed to be made to the document. But other than that, it is the one that the DDA has approved. And it's just first reading, so I'd be happy to make those changes mentioned in the memo prior to the second reading. And with that, I'll take any questions you have at this time, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple clarification questions. So is this, I was looking at it, this is the plan then from the first time in April?
Correct.
That we had it, not the one from the last June fourth meeting then?
That is, that is correct, yes.
And then there's a couple recommended changes in the summary, I see. And then, are we including, I think, so I see one, one page of AEW plans. I think the other three are missing this time, but they, it should be all four pages from April? Because I only see the one page now. The one page I'm talking about.
Yeah, so when the DDA reapproved the plan, they just decided to keep the streetscape, the streetscape improvements that they had already approved from AEW in this version, so that is reflected in the, the document in front of you.
Okay, and none of the proposed farmer's market pages then?
Nothing related to Civic Point Community Gathering Space, they did not wish to include that project into this document at this time, no.
Okay, okay. I think, okay, I think, yeah, that was on the questions.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Okay. I would move to introduce and give first reading to the Downtown Development Authority's amended development plan and tax increment financing, financing plan and ordinance number 24-1237 to amend the DDA's development plan and TIF plan and schedule a second reading for the August 13th, 2024 regular city council meeting.
Is there support? Yeah, I'll second that. And actually, I did have another question then. Two questions, actually. So the, there was an ordinance, so, yeah, this, this was at the end of it last time, right? We're approving where we say we have ordinance 24-1237. That was included before, but that's not in this packet. I guess we would just be doing the same thing, but with different dates then, right? Because that's dated June 18th. And this, I think we've got a missing T there. Okay, so then just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page before we vote. There was like a one-page ordinance at the end of it last time that just says like the city of East Point had created, according to the laws and statutes provided, a DDA in 1986, dot, dot, dot. And then we're including the whole plan in here by reference. And then, yeah, what was my second question? I'm sorry that I am not 100% organized at the moment, but the, what's my second question? Sorry, can't think of it. Okay. I guess we'll keep going then.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to, well, I got to stay there. Item C, approval and adoption of resolution number 24-1987 to establish Winter's Sausage Industrial Development District Number One. Did you want to give a brief overview on this before we put it on the floor?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Wonderful. So I know we had received some questions on this project in particular, so, and I do want to say too, we have the applicants here, Winter Sausage, as well as representative from Macomb County's Planning and Economic Development Department. So I'm just going to give a brief overview and then if you have any questions about that, about what's included in your packet, you know, we'd be happy to answer those questions at this time. So the proposal in front of you is to establish Winter Sausage Industrial Development District Number One. Just for a little bit of background, Winter Sausage is an East Point family-owned business that's been in operation since 1951 and it is one of the only large industrial employers that we have in our city. It is the official sausage of the Detroit Tigers and Lions and as others have stated during their, during the hearing of the public, they have given back to the community on numerous occasions over the years. Their desire is to expand here in the gateway to Macomb County, even though there have been organizations that have tried to poach them from neighboring communities. So I want to be very clear about that. They've been offered to go to other places and they've said, no, we want to stay in East Point. They've spent a significant amount of time and money adapting their designs and from our conversation today are still working through some things with DTE as there's infrastructure on the back of their property that they've been trying to, as best they can, design the project so it's not going to interfere with that. And they've also worked through with the Planning Commission and achieved Class A non-conforming use designation from the East Point Planning Commission, which was essential for this project to move forward. We had an initial meeting with them, gosh, it's probably been almost a year now, maybe even longer. And that was with representatives from the county's Planning and Economic Development Department. It's interesting because Emerson was actually an intern now and now she's with the county full-time, so this is a definitely a full circle moment for her. And then we also had representatives from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, and other business support organizations that were all really excited and on board to see this project move forward. For those of you that don't know, Michigan actually has the second greatest crop diversity in the country, yet our food processing and production lags behind the bounty that is raised both locally here in urban seed in the northern portion of the county and throughout our pleasant peninsulas. So this project is really an opportunity to begin building our family town's economy around one of life's necessities, food. So, and I want to thank Macomb County as well as the representatives from Winter Sausage for being here today and the county specifically for providing some of these preliminary numbers and an explanation to support this phase of the process. So from our initial conversation, we received that the estimated investment for this particular project was 2.5 million and based on the county's estimated tax increase after abatement, the city would realize a $71,000 increase. So that's based on the estimated investment number and job creation of their future project. So this includes the taxes on production and imports as well as the net increase on profits. The estimated local economic infusion long-term is valued at over 3.2 million and that's not just in East Point, but also in other surrounding communities. This project will retain 65 jobs as well as create 25 new jobs. The duration of the abatement can be for up to 12 years, though that duration is at the East Point City Council's discretion and based on the final approval from the state of Michigan. East Point City Council and the state of Michigan also final approval for an industrial facilities tax exemption or IFTE, which is basically the next step in this process. So more specific numbers will be available if and when we bring that IFTE back to you for approval. And the, what's in front of you today, the establish of an industrial development district or IDD will have no impact on taxes until East Point City Council and the state of Michigan approves an industrial facilities tax exemption or IFTE. And at this time, would like to welcome the applicants to come up and our representative from Macomb County's Planning and Economic Development Department for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Well, does anyone have any questions first of all? I know we had some emails with information in it.
I'll just, I had asked about the numbers, but I'll just wait to see what's provided to us then.
Okay. Did you want to speak or only if we have questions?
Hi, I'm Emerson Kuleski with Macomb County. Just wanted to go back to the impact report we have in front of you. They're just projections and I know the project has changed slightly since we met last year, so the investment number may look a little different moving forward, but we just kind of wanted to show you what that project may look like if you do approve for an IDD. And furthermore, they go for that IFT. So just wanted to let you know. Yeah.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Well, is there somebody here from Winter Sausage? I have one question if you'd come up to the microphone.
I wasn't going to make you come up.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Greg Van Hagenbrock.
Greg?
I'm president of Winter Sausage. How are you?
Well, I'll let you know it when the meeting's over.
Okay.
One question.
Sure.
Are you going to keep your steer?
You mean the cow on top of the building?
No, it's a steer, it's not a cow.
Anyway, yes, we are. We fully intend to do that, yes.
That's...
That's it?
Thank God.
Okay.
People go, people drive into East Point from Detroit and if they don't see that cow, they won't know what city they're in. It's that beautiful.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
A lot of people come and they, you know, we actually give directions to truck drivers coming in, just look for the bull on top of the building, you know, so they can relate to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
The USDA made them, we called them.
No, no, no. You can't speak during the meeting, I'm sorry.
Would anyone like to? Sure. What was the impact report we were just talking about a second ago? Did we get that? I guess I wasn't sure what we were...
I think it's a study that we have that came from Emerson after the agenda was finalized, but I think it's, I don't, did you guys review?
So the numbers in my overview were based on the numbers from that impact report.
That's what you leave forwarding to us?
We can, certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve and adopt resolution number 24-1987 to establish Winter Sausage Industrial Development District Number One.
Is there support?
I'll second that.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item D. Thank you very much. Item D, approval and adoption of resolution number 24-1986 to designate individuals authorized to sign M.D. contracts number 2024-0307.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve and adopt resolution number 24-1986 to designate individuals authorized to sign M.D. contract number 2024-0307 and just replace Ms. Carol Appley as she's retired now with Mr. Darren Palucci.
I'll second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, approval and adoption of resolution 24-1984, committed fund balance. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move we approve and adopt a resolution 24-1984, identifying categories to be included in the general funds committed fund balance.
I'll second that as well.
All right. Any questions?
Maybe one quick, do we have the right numbers here? I know we had a number issue, but I think we went backwards too just now. All right, it wasn't the last one, 1986.
Apparently I grabbed one before somebody else, but they weren't put in order on the agenda, so.
Okay, just making sure we don't have to, you know, do that again. Okay.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, approve engineering proposal for the reconstruction of Ash Avenue.
Madam Mayor, I'm delighted to move to approve the engineering proposal. What?
Nothing.
Nothing.
We'll tell you.
Oh, because I said delighted?
No, you said madam mayor.
I did? I'm so sorry. I apologize. I really...
It's okay.
I'm going to have to take a pee, Burke, I guess.
I'll second your motion though.
Oh boy, I'm so embarrassed to approve the engineer proposal for the reconstruction of Ash Avenue from Kelly to Beaconsville.
Second.
All right, did anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item G, approve engineering proposal for 10-mile road basketball court parking lot improvements. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we would approve the AW engineering proposal dated July 9th, 2024 for the 10-mile road basketball court parking lot improvements.
Is there support?
I will second that. Then I had a quick question. Should we, since, well, we haven't seen the numbers on the other parking lot we've previously talked about, but could we add in to see about previous pavement for this also? Or I guess concrete, I don't know if, you know, we do an option when we bid and see what that is and then pick one, you know, to reduce storm sewer, you know, costs and all that thing, you know? Is anyone interested in that?
I'll repeat that. You're asking for, to get back various options?
Because I think right now, well, right now it's just assuming asphalt, I think, right? Yeah. Can we see about when we go out to bid for this? See about previous pavement also?
I apologize. Would you, would you be looking for, just so I understand, when the person, when the companies bid, they'll show price for one and also include price for the other all on the same document or whatever?
That'd be, I guess, my suggestion. I think we've done that before. And just pick one or the other when, when it comes back.
Yeah.
Unless administration had a, is there a better way to do it or a different way?
Miss Walton?
I don't think there would be an issue, Ryan.
No, we could definitely, yeah, we could definitely do that. And maybe, you know, recent meeting too, the community garden parking lot was discussed too and maybe advantageous to bid those out together as one project for better pricing as well and have those alternatives for both parking lots as a possibility too.
Okay.
Do I need to make an amendment to the motion that I made saying that we were going to get costs for both types? Well, amended accordingly.
All right.
Sure.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. Moving on to item H, bid award non-union compensation study. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to award the non-union compensation study to Ronberg, Stoffer and Associates for the amount not to exceed $26,000.
Second.
All right, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Moving on to item I, approval of the third-party general liability insurance. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we award and authorize the execution of an agreement with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority to administer and provide excess liability insurance coverage for the city's self-insurance program for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 and authorize the city's necessary contribution to its lost fund with the total cost of services, insurance and contributions to be $608,052.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item J, discussion on proposed urban seed community garden lease agreement. Did anyone have any questions or want to open up with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think just, I had one, one suggestion that I think we discussed briefly last time, but is not included in the agreement to just have a three-year transition period from right now the city's cutting the grass as we have been, you know, all the time, but they offered to cut the grass, just get some ti, you know, a couple seasons to figure out who can do that or how they can do that included into the agreement, you know, you know, a three-year grace period for grass cutting.
Can we, Rich, if we do a motion and just verbally ask, should we have that added before we actually approve the lease agreement?
I'd recommend that. And I also had a question in drafting the proposed lease under paragraph four, as far as any maintenance or repairs. I know there isn't, you know, an actual building on the site, but there is the parking lot and any other structures that may be there. I left that blank, so we can either just take that section out if that's what the council wants to do or set a dollar amount and similar to what we did for the military museum. Now, in that case, it was repairs under $5,000, anything over that was, could be the city's responsibility. I didn't know how the council felt about that, so that's why I left that, that paragraph with those blanks in there. I figured we'd leave that up to a discussion here at the table.
Same as museums, fine with me. $5,000.
I guess I'm just curious, just so, for my own curiosity, is administration comfortable with those things that's outlined, like the grass, the transitional, the transition with grass cutting? And do we need to have a dollar amount, I guess, for the maintenance that, for the property that has no buildings, so?
I'm not going to talk about grass, I'll let the city manager take that, but I think four should be tenant agrees.
But I think four should be tenant agrees to perform maintenance and repairs, period. There's no physical thing there for us, other than the parking lot that we're already in process of repairing. There's just nothing else there for the city to be involved in.
I mean, I tend to agree. The parking lot's the only thing we're putting in there.
Yeah, I figured that number just basically stated that, because, you know, the parking lot would be the only thing, or we could just state that. I don't know.
Specify the parking lot and leave it at that. City's responsible for the parking lot.
Okay, so what I'll do is, it'll just read tenant agrees to perform maintenance and repairs, period. City's responsible for the maintenance or repair of the parking lot. And with regard to the three-year transition on the grass, again, what exactly is that provision? Just want to make sure that it's accurate.
Right now, the city cuts the grass and then we just wouldn't.
After three years from now?
Or earlier, I guess, if they prefer.
Mr. Mayor, I could, I can certainly make those changes if the council wishes to pass a motion with those changes and then just provide that to Ms. Walton for execution.
I have a question as well. With the permeable pavement, there's maintenance that goes along with that. Is the council, council's intention is that we maintain that during the length of the lease? Or is that going to be a part of the grass cutting that you would maintain the permeable pavement and cut the grass and then cut the strips through the permeable pavement section? Just wanted to clarify.
It would have been my intention that they would maintain that. I, I think that they just cut the grass on top of the pavement essentially, right?
I think there's also that, but then I think there's also certain things that have to be done, like within like the, Ryan, what do you call, like the grading in between to make sure that it doesn't grow over?
Yeah, definitely, you know, grass cutting, but there could be some weed control as well involved with that, too. But I guess as far as the grass portion, I'm not too familiar with that. But there would definitely be some grass cutting that would need to be taken care of.
If I can ask a question, I mean, I guess, and, you know, I was not at the meeting where the parking lot was discussed, but I did, you know, watch and I heard about the permeable pavement. But I guess if it's gonna create work for someone to maintain from the garden, would it be better to consider possibly doing asphalt? And I guess, maybe members of the garden, I don't know if they can answer that question, like would they prefer asphalt over the permeable pavement just because it's increased maintenance and there's still things to figure out as far as who's doing what with grass and everything else? I didn't actually think of that question until like this moment, so, otherwise I could have asked you guys ahead of time. But I didn't have the question.
Maybe what I might suggest now is actually, I think maybe we should draft it because administration could probably have a conversation with the garden first. And I would suggest, I would suggest the garden be responsible for maintenance of the parking lot and then the city be responsible for replacement or repairs. If that makes sense.
It does. Is there, is that a consensus?
Yes.
Oh, there was one last thing that, I know we were kicking it back over to Ms. Walton about the transition with grass cutting. And the only thing I'd ask is, is that good with administration? Like, do you guys see any potential hangups? Is that fair, you know? It's a new thing for me, so I don't know, but.
It's something, like Mayor had mentioned that we should probably talk to the garden about because I thought there were some concerns with the grass cutting and they had damaged some different things. And so I thought there were just certain areas of the garden that we weren't sending the contractor to. So I don't know all that offhand, but if we have the opportunity to meet and talk with them, we can certainly do that and then come back and share with Mr. Albright, or we can all do it together.
I'll make, I'll make those changes, though.
Yeah, and then I, if we can just have it on the next agenda then with the changes. The only other change I had, and I guess this might not necessarily need to be changed, but I'd like to add to the notices for tenant, I know we have this, John Hoffman specified, but maybe also, since it's possibly twenty-five years, resident agent of the, you know, whoever that is for the garden.
Or resident agent.
Yeah.
And then just, I just noticed this on page two for utilities, there's a blank there. Utilities shall include, it's a responsibility of the tenant. But we just want to say responsible for utilities, period?
Yeah, the util, there's only, only water there.
Only water, okay.
So you could specify water.
Which seven? Oh, I see.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just put water in the blank. Mayor, it'll be on the August meeting agenda.
Okay, I think you could probably just scrap that second sentence entirely. Well, however you want to do it. All right, any other questions? Okay, we'll discuss that on the next agenda, so we'll move on to accept the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Project Grant Award. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Project Grant Award in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars with a local match of seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Moving on to item L, approval of the contract for the city attorney services.
I did have a couple of questions, and this is my first time being a part of the contract because it just, the way it filled with my term. But just for my clarity, you know, I know there's, there's a retainer that goes out or that we pay you, pay your firm. And I was looking at the things that are covered under the retainer, which is like conversations with council, residents about things. And I know that, reading further, that there are some things that may not fall under the retainer. But I guess my, my question would be, say, whether it was my son or whoever says, hey, Rich, I got a question, sends you either email, and I know here it mentioned telephone call and also just meetings. But my son reaches out and says, Rich, hey, I have a question about this. And I don't know, for some reason he gets email happy or phone call happy. Does that still, does that always still fall under that retainer? Or is that at some point, does the city wind up billing, being billed for that? Or would it be, my son's coming to you with non-city concerns or issues? And so now he's now responsible for whatever fee that is incurred because of your time? I hope that's, I hope I asked that question right.
I understand the question. So in a case like that, any, for instance, appearances here at city council meeting, planning commission meetings, ZBA meetings, those are all covered under the general retainer, which is specified under section three.
Okay.
In the case of your son speaking to me about just a general city matter, I put everything that I do on a timesheet, but that would fall under what we call EPGEN. That's how it gets listed on my timesheet.
EPGEN.
So that falls under the umbrella of EPGEN. Now, if your son was talking to me about something unrelated to the city, if he needed, you know, additional legal services, that's a conversation that I would have with him, but that would be unrelated to the city. That would be, I'd be providing him legal advice in our capacity as private lawyers and not as attorneys for the city.
Okay. EPGEN would be just eat, like, general things about East Point or whatever?
Yes. General, general questions from council members, city administration, police department, residents, non-residents, that all falls within. But I keep track of everything that I do on a daily basis. So if it's a telephone call, so I can look back, you know, six months from now, if that person says, hey, we talked, you know, back in July, I can look back at my timesheet. If I didn't take separate notes, I could at least look on my timesheet to say, oh, that's right, I spoke to that person on such and such date.
Yeah, I know you're thorough. That's my, that's my experience. So I guess, and I apologize if it sounds funny or like a weird question, but I just honestly didn't, didn't know how all of that worked or if it all just fell under that retainer or how it, you know, how it lines up. Because I, you know, my, my whole thing is always be fair, not only to the city of East Point, but also, you know, fair to you. I just believe that's how you do good business, you know? Chalk it up to being told, firm handshake, look somebody square in the eyes, just certain principles you have. So I'm always about trying to be fair from both sides, so. But I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. And, you know, because I know sometimes there are people who have questions like, hey, you know, Rob, your son came up there and we see him talking to Rich after every meeting or after whatever, you know? Are we paying for that or is he paying for that or is that the retainer? So I guess just to clear up any misunderstandings that I had.
Yeah, the only, the only time that something like that might be billed is if, for instance, somebody's talking to us about an open billable file. Depending on the nature of the conversation, I would still put that on my timesheet. I may put it down as an NC, meaning no charge. But depending on the substance of the conversation, then it would be listed as possible billable time. But that's only if we had an actual open billable file.
Okay, okay. So that would, the open, and I apologize, I just don't, the terms are new to me. The open billable file would be the things that don't fall under the retainer, but are things that East Point would be paying for separate from the retainer?
Yes, that actually falls under section two. And anything that would fall under that umbrella, that's where the hourly rate is a hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Okay.
And that, and that hourly rate is remaining unchanged from the previous city attorney contract.
Okay, yeah, I did, I did do my side by sides, but, you know, I'm not afraid to ask a question if I don't understand something.
Please do.
Um, I guess lastly, the, the only other thing I would ask, I get, I'm curious to hear what everybody's thoughts are. As far as, you know, I know my understanding is this contract would be for three years. And guys, please feel free to chime in and let me know. Do you guys feel that we should just go ahead and do it for the three years? Or should we, you know, I don't know if it's customary to, to compare it with like other municipalities because I want to make sure we're fair to you. You know, I don't want to shortchange you in any regard, you know? Are you comfortable with it as it is? Or do you feel like, hey, that's fair, like, we can, I know, I know we have to put something in motion, but should we put something in motion for maybe a shorter period of time temporarily and do a comparable? Or is, how does everybody feel about that? You know, again, this is a new process for me, so I apologize for being wordsy and for lengthy in my questions, but I, I've never actually sat through a contract with you, so I don't know what's customary.
We're comfortable with the proposal that's before the council this evening for three years, and we would ask that that be adopted.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it about that length, too. Just like with the city manager's contract, I think it's in that range, seems to be pretty normal.
I don't have a problem with three years.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to hear your opinions about it because, again, it's a new process for me. The last time you had this before the council, I wasn't on, so. Okay. And I know too, sometimes, I mean, not necessarily with this, but we bid out for things. I don't know that you do that for this, but it's just a totally new process for me, so. You know, no offense towards anybody, I just wanted to ask. I'll do it publicly that way. Nobody says I whispered behind your back about anything, so.
Sure. One comment, Councilman Baker. I guess how I look at it, at least with the city manager and city attorney contract, is slightly different than any other contract because they're, you know, an employee of the city, like, full-time. The other contracts, when we go out to bid as much, are like that, you know, very specific project. So at least that's how I look at it and going forward and not like going out to, you know, bid or something necessarily for those services if we're trying to renew with our current manager or attorney. But yeah, that, that's basically how I, I look at it, I guess, at least. And I guess in the next three years, you know, I, I'll try, you know, try to look at other contracts in other cities if, you know, we are thinking to make a change. I don't know about doing something extra or change, you know, something and figure that out between now and the end of that contract.
Yeah, and I, I get it. Like I said, my, my whole objective is to be fair.
Yeah.
So, you know, both sides, you know, so. I didn't think you'd take it any kind of way if I asked you that question, but, you know, I'll give you, I'll look you right in the eye and ask you so, that way you hear it directly from me, so. All right, that's the only questions I have.
All right. I think we still needed a motion.
Mr. Mayor, then, I will move that we approve the contract for city services as proposed for the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven years.
I'll second.
All right, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Moving on to payroll and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
All right, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we pay the bills in the amount of six million, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Support. All right, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. All right, we'll move to the second hearing of the public, which is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nix, thank you, Councilman DeMonico, for bringing that up, that check, it's, um, yes, the check number was one three six nine hundred, and it was on the check register in Charles Second, Charles Thirteenth. It's all, you're not sure of what it, what it referred to, it's, um, it's one ninety-six. I would feel so much better if somebody would tell me that that traffic study is going to be stopped during school year and not just, and, you know, if it's not done, it's, it's for eight or a full holiday. I just feel that, that road is new life, very much for both the high schools and that additional traffic on top of normal traffic. It seemed like back in August of two thousand twenty-one, when you guys did a kind of traffic study presentation, sorry. And you had that simulation with all the cars that, you know, for the three lanes, they were queuing up past the police station and fire station and blocking the driveways and stuff like that. I don't know when that traffic study was done. It was presented on August seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one, so I don't know if that was done in the summertime also, but it just seems like it would be more accurate to take into account when the most traffic is or... And again, I don't know how traffic studies are done, if it's over a week period, different times of the day. You know, but I think it would make everybody feel more comfortable to make sure that we have a very accurate count before we start taking lanes away and, you know, making, making roads narrower and I feel making slower traffic, more stop traffic, more difficult to get down nine-mile road. So that's all that I had. And again, I know that I can't ask questions and get an answer, but maybe I can email you, Ms. Walton, and you can clarify that with, for me a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Hall Raver, I think I keep forgetting to say my name for some reason. I'm not sure why. But anyway, I don't always agree with everything you guys do, but I can appreciate the fact that, for the most part, you're actually thinking. I know that sounds a little weird, but there are so many people who do things without thinking, they simply react. I wasn't aware that you had enough influence in our small sphere of East Point to actually impact what's going on in the Middle East by having a conversation. And that's not being unfeeling. It's just that there are certain things that, I guess, people need to understand what you have some ability to do and what you can actually influence. I feel like I'm lecturing people and I don't want to do that. I just want to make it clear that there are some things that I understand your role. And I think if we understood the role of city government, local government, county commissioners, whatever, we could eliminate a lot of conversation that really is kind of pointless. I would hope that if we're going to have a conversation about things that are going on in other countries, that we include the continent of Africa. There's so much going on in the world where there are problems. And if we're going to discuss one, we might as well discuss them all. one, we might as well discuss them all. The other thing I wanted to briefly touch on is I understand personal preferences in everything that we do. I just have a problem thinking that council has any ability to determine what everybody's personal preference would be. And, you know, I'm a meat eater, so I'm glad that you're expanding, approving the expanding for winter. And once again, I'll try to limit my conversation that deals directly with the city or anything within the city, whether that in person. But if we're going to talk about other countries and the problems there, let's do it for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
First I have to say in the letters that I did get everyone, excuse the typos if I made any certain medications, I lose my vision. I have to state that when the city of East Point changed from a family town to a gateway town, all went downhill. It's nice to see winter sausages still here. We have to maintain getting businesses back into the city before we do any other demolition because we don't have departments that can keep up on cleaning. Since two eighteen, I even, I live across from Say Veronica's on Dover. The signage that was included has been knocked down five times. The signage is dangerous. You put parking on Dover in a school that has no stop signs, no lights. These kids are running across the street in between cars with a very tight limit. I have been fighting since two eighteen. Call Officer Pruitt from the police department, do this, do that. Your DPW department person told me in person in front of Mr. Ervey Curly that it's not his problem. It's Macomb County Road Commission and MDOT. I went down to Macomb County Road Commission and I spoke to them directly and I spoke to MDOT and they both told me I am being lied to. It's up to Mr. Palucci to repair signage, to put signage back where it's been knocked down. He stated to me, I can't just pull a sign out of my hat and put it wherever I want to. No, you put it where it belongs, where it's been knocked down. At least replace it. Give these children a stop sign to cross Dover going north and south, east and west.
You have thirty seconds.
We have more families moving into this neighborhood, which is a good thing. Let's keep them here, but if we don't keep their children safe, we won't have a family town ever again.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Name Larry Edwards, East Point resident. I would just want to thank Councilman Baker for bringing up the procedure with Counselor Albrecht because I know I have personally asked Mr. Albrecht questions as well. And so I, I guess I need to understand, was I being charged? And if I was being charged, and you say about an hour or so, and my conversation is like thirty seconds, twenty seconds, a minute, and would that be charged for the full hour? And what have you, because if that be the case, then, you know, that would concern me. I am a resident and a taxpayer, so I would like to have a little bit more clarity on that. The other thing is I don't like double standards and what have you. We're talking about world, world happiness and what have you. It wasn't too long ago, uh, there was a lot of people getting up, talking about do this, do that for Ukraine and what have you. And I was totally offended by it because I know they're totally racist and people were going and all and all about Ukraine and what, it wasn't a problem then and what have you. So when you say, uh, if you're going to do one, do one for all and, and remember what you're saying before you start talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
So either you didn't do your homework or you did and you just didn't care. And I'm not going to apologize for interrupting because I will interrupt when it deals with animal cruelty in public safety. In June two thousand of eighteen, winter sausage was recalling approximately twenty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-six pounds of poultry, pork and beef products due to misbranding. This is from the USDA food and safety inspection. All that was recovered was fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifteen pounds. How did you not know that? Did you not do your homework? Or did you know this and you didn't care? What is going on in this city? Code of ethics are not being followed? There's endless excuses for laws that are broken and no tickets are issued. There's ordinances being violated and it's endless excuses. As a homeowner and a taxpayer, I'm not paying for excuses. And if you don't want residents criticizing any of you, then do your damn job. And if you don't like your comments, you don't get to criticize our comments. You get to say, I don't agree with you and that's fine. But you don't get to get into this little match with us because our First Amendment rights guarantees that as citizens, we are allowed to redress our governments without fear of reprisal, retaliation, retribution. I've been here for seventeen years. I've watched this city go to hell in a handbasket. I have heard so many excuses, it's ridiculous. I've told you repeatedly about these slum lords and how they don't care. All they care about is getting the rent. They don't give a damn about anything else. You had our city attorney draft the nuisance tenant ordinance, that thing's never been enforced. And so now you got tenants running around acting like they own the whole damn block and as homeowners, we're not supposed to do anything. We just have to put up with all the crappy behavior. No, we don't. You have a job to do. Do your damn job, enforce the ordinances, enforce the laws.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
I just wanted to say, um, we gave you two, um, passionate reasons why you shouldn't have given that business a license. Um, and you just, you didn't have any discussion about it, you just, you just voted for it. I knew you were because you're all meat eaters and you're just doing it because, you know, you could care less about the animals. I mean, you show that by their deeds, you shall know them. So your deeds prove you don't care about animals. You open up a facility that's going to pay to murder innocent pigs, throw them in a gas chamber and people could come up here and say, I'm a meat eater and just forget about everything we just said. They're throwing pigs in a gas chamber. How could you not care about them and just turn your back on them? Absolutely hypocrisy beyond words, hypocrisy. Oh, I, I want to eat dogs, so open up, open up a dog eating facility. Hypocrisy beyond anything that my mind can even accept. Other thing is if you, if somebody wants to talk about Africa, please do. Please do, man. I wish somebody would. But I'm talking about the Palestine, the genocide in Palestine and other municipalities have made ordinances condemning Israel's terrorism against Palestine. So that's something that you can do. You have time to make gay parades and, and attend them. You guys attended them, I read, both, both the mayor and, and you ran for mayor, you were there. That's a national issue. What do you care about who, somebody sleeping with somebody else and somebody at home? I mean, that's a national issue. So you, you could talk about controversial issues, you can talk about national issues all you want. You have the right to do that. And so that's, that's, that's right in your purview, so I don't see any problem with that at all. And it shows that you stand with people being genocided. So you proved today you don't care about public comments, you don't care about animals, you don't care about genocide, you're going to do what you want to do anyways, you're going to do what your personal preferences, and we're just here to, I don't know, I don't, what's the point of public comments? You're not taken into account. I mean, it's unbelievable. That's all I got to say. Haven't I said?
Thank you.
Hello again, members of mayor and council people. Can we talk about trees? Um, I have two trees. They're about a hundred years old. They're on my boulevard and the last month I've noticed that they're falling apart, to say the words. Every time the wind blows, the leaves fall, I get huge branches falling down. Do I need to talk to DPW to see if they can check the trees to see if they're diseased that need to get cut down? And if they need to get cut down, can I get a replacement for the tree? Just like one tree, because I've got two huge maple trees. So that's all I have to say.
Oh, thank you. And actually, uh, we have our director back there. Can you leave your, uh, name and information with him?
Thank you.
All right, would anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to, uh, mayor and council reports. We'll start with, uh, Councilman Curly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we came here tonight, um, I have deep concerns about what's happening in our country. We have, we have so many things that, that are not right. Things that were brought up tonight, uh, people are serious about it and they're concerned about it and that's fine. I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable being part of, being called part of genocide, but the gentleman has a right to say whatever he wants in a hearing of the public. But we got a lot of problems in this country. They're all much bigger than East Point. They are much bigger than East Point and, uh, we have to understand that and we have to do what we feel in our heart that is right to do. But, uh, I will stand up and protect and defend East Point until my death. I've been here a long time, not as long as some of the others here tonight, since nineteen sixty-four. And we have a lot of pimples. We do, there's a lot of pimples and we're trying to squeeze them so we don't have any anymore and it, we may not have accomplished that, but I'm proud to be up here tonight. I'm proud to be a resident of East Point and, uh, yes, every one of you is sitting here right now. I want to say have a wonderful week and God bless each one of you.
Thanks you, thank you, uh, Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would echo some, uh, similar sentiments as Councilman Curly. A lot of times we have to be careful about the things we choose to speak on, the things that we talk about, conversations that we engage in. And I, I feel that everybody has a right to be passionate about what they choose to be passionate about. But one thing that I try to do is to be careful with, with my words, careful with the things that I say because we know that it will come back to haunt us if we say the wrong thing. It doesn't mean that we lack in compassion towards anyone or anybody. Some people have different methods of expressing their feelings about certain things. Uh, one of my practices in life, um, and that's long before this council table, my practice was to take care of home first. I have children at home, uh, and I've raised my children, they're, they're all pretty much grown now, but my practice was to take care of home first. I've had family members that have served in the military, I've talked to people who have known people who have served in Vietnam and other wars, and there are a lot of things that, uh, need to be fixed here. And sometimes that's the process that people choose to follow. Some people choose to go abroad and work outside of their own home and work in other people's homes. I don't stand here or sit here rather to tell anybody what process to follow. I know how I govern me. The things that I want to see in the world, the changes that I want to see in the world, I try to be an example of that. When I want to see kindness in the world, I make sure I do my part to exhibit kindness. When I want to see love in the world, I do my part to exhibit love. When I want to see peace, I try to exhibit peace. I can govern me. But one thing that I know too is that when you sit up here publicly, you open yourself up to the scrutiny of others. And that's okay, that's what we asked for when we ran, when we were elected. I've never once said that I had a problem with anybody criticizing me up here. In fact, I've encouraged it. I said, hey, if you have a concern, you have thoughts, feel free to share. I've said that publicly from this seat. And the thing is, is that everybody's entitled to have an opinion. I don't ever get, I don't get upset about somebody's opinion about me. In fact, at my age, it doesn't really bother me if you don't like me, if you have a problem with me, as long as I know I didn't do you any wrong. If I know that I've lived right, if I've treated you right, I've treated you fairly, if I treated you kindly, then I don't worry about if you choose to not like me or if you choose to have a problem with me or if you choose to disagree with me. That's your right, that's everybody's right to do that. Me and Mary, we've had some conversations where we've disagreed about things and to this day, she can tell you, I'll, I'll call her and we'll laugh about a lot of them because I, I appreciate the way she told me her feelings. It didn't change our friendship, it didn't change our relationship, nothing. And that's how I try to open myself up from this seat. I, I sit here knowing that I will be judged by people and not necessarily hypocritically, but judged based off of my actions. That's how I've always lived my life, knowing that whatever I do publicly can be commented on publicly, it's observed and people have a right to say or feel whatever it is that they feel. And if we have a civil dialogue about it, then I may be able to correct some misunderstandings or you may leave with the same opinion or, or different. But, um, one thing for me is if you, if anyone feels like, hey, Rob, I don't like you or you're the worst thing since the hard rain that started, uh, falling, it's okay. I welcome that because you're entitled to have that opinion and frankly, if you feel comfortable enough to come to me and talk to me about how you feel, then I thank you for it. Which also leads to my word of the day, and it was not planned based off of this meeting, but the word was imperturbable. Uh, and that just means unable to be excited or upset, just basically calm. That's all I have.
All right, uh, Councilman DeMonico.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, oh, yeah, rain's coming back. Thinking no one's looking forward to walking outside till we're all done talking, so I guess we got a couple minutes to talk here. But yeah, no, um, I guess I'll start out kind of on some comments that Councilman Baker and Councilman Curly commented on. If, if we can all just be more civil with each other and, and also though, bring up issues. If, if we can all just be more civil with each other and, and also though, bring up issues and talk about things that you're concerned about, I think is good. I was originally going to start my comments about what happened on Saturday in this country. And it's not like one singular act of violence. There's been other acts in our country that have happened. We need to, you know, vote, have elections and not run our country with guns or violence or things like that. If we do that, we don't really, sorry if I sound like I'm yelling, but I feel like I need to yell over this rain right now. But we need to, you know, run our country on words and not guns. So, you know, keep that in mind, try to do that. And I'm going to try and follow that. You know, political violence has no place in our country. You know, we need to follow the laws the people have passed or the representatives of the people have passed. You know, the five of us up here, you know, of course, including Councilwoman Bishadlik, who's not here tonight. We vote on all kinds of things and the reason is we, we can't get the opinion of all 34,000 people on every single item. We need to elect people to do that. We of course have people in Congress to do things about, you know, wars in Gaza and Israel and with the Palestinians or in Ukraine. We have other people and they have this sphere of influence to make a positive direction. I think that's where Ms. Al Rayford was going in her comments. Kind of reminds me of a book I read a long time ago, Seven Habits book. I'm sure some of you are familiar with that. It's like you've got your sphere of influence. I think our sphere of influence up here, you know, we all think it, you know, I'm sure, think it's atrocities in the other countries. Sorry, it's hard to focus with that rain. And, but, you know, if we do something up here, is that going to help? Now, I think it does help with when we do Pride Month resolutions up here and we support the LGBT community. Because of course, like any other community, we have members of our community that are LGBT. And by doing what I think is a simple resolution, can support and make a huge difference for someone. And that's why I support, you know, when we do a Pride Month resolution. On a lighter topic, I want to congratulate the Odd Fellows again on their 100 years. They had their, just a couple days after our last meeting, their 100 year celebration on their exact 100th year. It was pretty interesting to see some of the stuff they had from 100 years ago when they first started out, like the membership cards and some pictures and stuff. So that was neat. And then make sure on two days, hopefully the weather is not like it is tonight, for Pride in the Park in Roseville at their Veterans Memorial Park, 6:30, 10 p.m. If you can make, make it out, as Sarah from Rare earlier was talking about, please do so. And then, I don't know if I'm taking this out of your playbook, Mr. Mayor, but for the Rockin' Summer Night that she also discussed, that's August 14th, come on out and you'll have a chance to dunk the mayor or I in a dunk tank to, to raise money for the Memorial Day Parade. So it's for a great cause. You know, the parade committee pays for the police and DPW services. So come out and try and knock us into the tank and raise a few bucks for the parade. And then just, oh, and one quick comment on the, the industrial development district for winter sausage, that whole conversation. We're not talking about if the business gets a license or not, or if we're going to allow them to continue operating or stop them operating. That's not the conversation. The conversation is they're going to do a huge capital investment and there's a state law that allows them to potentially get a break on their taxes. That is what the conversation, well, eventually it'll be about there's these couple steps we need to do as we did, you know, one tonight. But about the business operating and all that, that's not what is up for debate, just to kind of clarify that. So yeah, let's, let's all be, you know, more, more civil and hopefully we don't see more things like we saw on Saturday in the country in the future here. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, I would just echo pretty much the comments from all the, my fellow members up here. So I won't repeat what they've said, but I was not going to mention the dunk tank. The committee reached out and members asked to, if I would do that. And I, I said, sure, they're not going to get a dunk tank. And I got a text yesterday, I think you guys rented it. So I will be there. Happy, I, I was out of town for the 4th, so I hope everyone had a good 4th of July. I do want to say congratulations to the retirement for Carol Apely. And that's all I have for tonight. So would anyone like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, a motion we go into closed session for settlement strategy pursuant to MCL 15-2681E and also collective bargaining, MCL 15-2681C.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley? Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Going to closed session at 9:14. All right, calling, or going back into open session at nine forty-one P. M. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding pending litigation?
I'll move that we take the city managers, I mean, I'm sorry, city attorneys' recommendation on the, regarding pending litigation, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. And then I entertain a motion regarding the proposed public service supervisors contract.
Sure, Mr. Merrill, motion that we approve the labor contract between the City of East Pointe and the Michigan Association Public Employees Department of Public Services Supervisors from, I guess, now until June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly. Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Curly, Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes, meeting adjourned at nine forty-three P. M.